Allowed by local regulations as well as the use of public streets in park will continue to be used as permitted by the city. The property owner and applicant do not propose to change any items on site that affect air, light, or use of the adjacent properties. Criteria two, you shall comply with the applicable district regulations and applicable provisions of the adopted comprehensive plan and downtown plans. Again, we concur with the staff's findings of the comprehensive plan and land development code regulations in their staff report too. The bed and breakfast is proposed within the NR 10, Neighborhood Residential 10 zoning district. This district permits bed and breakfast to be approved administratively if it meets defined conditions of approval per section 3.7(c)(1) of your LDC. That would mean no public hearing or public input. However, sections 3.7(f)(9) allows for other uses as deemed appropriate in the district by the zoning official. As the staff has presented and stated on the record, the bed and breakfast use requested is similar to a bed and breakfast use that we are requesting. And that use is listed as permitted, as the use is listed permitted under the NR 10 zoning district. They are identical in name and similar in use. The public hearing process allows for review and mitigation of potential issues that may be of concern to the public, as stated in the introduction of the special exception process in section 16.8. Furthermore, 16.8n of your land development code empowers the council to waive or modify applicable use standards for particular uses which coincide with the ability to conditionally approve the use in response to health, safety, and welfare of the public, as well as approve the use in a manner that the council deems acceptable. The request is consistent with comprehensive plan, future land use element policy 1.1.1, 14.1, which states that the residential lands that are intended to be used predominantly for housing, other uses that are consistent with the residential character may be permitted. Residential character is a key component to this discussion. The site has already been developed for residential use and developed under the guidelines within the NR zoning district and your local codes for single family. Site development elements such as landscaping, lighting, appearance of the structure were developed in a manner consistent with residential uses in the neighborhood. According to city records, the site was previously permitted, approved, and built consistent with these regulations. Furthermore, the primary structure is oriented towards West Red Esplanade and allows for the primary site activities to occur away from adjacent residential properties. Landscaping and a residential pool separate the primary building from adjacent residential properties. Activities within those areas are similar in nature, as is allowed currently on site and is allowed on the adjacent residential properties, and essentially for any site within the NR 10 zoning district. The locations, or, excuse me, number three, the location, size, and height of buildings, structures, walls, and fences, and the nature of the extent of screening, buffering, and landscaping shall be such that use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of an adjacent or nearby land or building. As I discussed in the previous items, the existing landscaping, buffering, setbacks, fence, walls, along with location of, size of, and height of structure does not hinder or discourage the appropriate development to use, or, excuse me, adjacent development to use the adjacent land or buildings. Maintaining the site as it has been developed for residential use, keeping the character and maintaining that residential character are a key component. The addition of large walls or commercially designed structures is contrary to the intent of this requirement. The site has been developed appropriately to blend and maintain a residential character. In addition to site design improvements, the structure is oriented towards West Red Esplanade and the waterfront and overseeing a transient local public park. This location at the end of a block over a primary roadway connecting the other neighborhood streets and overlooking a public place is an ideal location for a bed and breakfast. Number four, the proposed use will be such that pedestrian and vehicular traffic generated will not be hazardous or conflict with the existing and anticipated traffic in the neighborhood and on the streets serving the site. The site is designed to allow for parking in the rear of the building where six enclosed parking spaces are available. Additional parking is available on site to conservatively accommodate six additional vehicles. I have put on the screen basically the site plan that was submitted, and we've added parking spaces, not sizing of cars, but the extra rectangles that you see on the site are sized to what a normal parking space would be. So there's additional room beyond that, bigger than a car essentially. This clearly demonstrates that you could fit conservatively 12 vehicles on the site. And I'd like to point out that behind the Berry Street garage, you can see a rectangle there for parking, there's sufficient room to back out of the garage if concerned about circulation, and to exit forward facing out the street down the driveway to Berry if necessary. So there's sufficient room for maneuvering on the site. In addition, you have another driveway to the front of the building that could be served for check-in, could be served for maintenance vehicles or other circulation that's required with easily access out to Red Esplanade, which is a, obviously, as we all know, is a route out to US 41 and other regional road network in our community. The application includes traffic analysis that measured impacts, that the measured impacts are insignificant to the surrounding public street network, which includes three public streets. West Red Esplanade serves as an access and outlet for the neighboring park and to US 41 in the greater Puntagorda street network. The local grid network is advantageous and provides for convenient travel for all use of facilities and lands in the surrounding neighborhood, including residential uses. Neighborhood and regional pedestrian traffic utilize West Red Esplanade as a primary route due to its location along the water and connection to the public spaces such as Gilchrist Park and the Harbor Walk. The side streets and sidewalks are a grid network throughout the neighborhood and connect Marion Olympia to West Red Esplanade. The surrounding uses benefit from extensive infrastructure in the neighborhood to handle a variety of traffic types at a variety of times. In response to the public hearing discussions during the planning commission, the applicant has offered to reduce the number of rooms to eight, accept a condition of approval to limit pool hours, and has submitted a site plan that shows an intent to maintain the existing residential character of the building and site. As I mentioned, for an additional site plan to show that they are capable of parking additional, up to 12 conservatively, which is above and beyond what's required by your land development code. And also, I might add, and does not rely on on-street parking, despite the public on-street parking being available on both Berry and Dolly. The parking requirements are a formula that takes into consideration, and as your staff has agreed with, that not only the primary use, but associated uses and functions of the site to accommodate that use. It's generally all inclusive. I'm also providing, provide staff and the clerk with a list of conditions and safeguards intended to address several questions of the planning commission and public that's been divided by the operator. These address operations, deliveries, lighting and landscaping, and security. These can be included as part of the public record and showed that the operations will be handled by a local established business with vested interests to adhere to local regulations and be a good neighbor. In summary, it is my expert opinion as a professional planner that the application, the process, the proposed use, the proposed development are all consistent with the land development code and comprehensive plan. The application was complete and adequately addressed all 12 items required by the city's application criteria, including the four review criteria we just went over, and is outlined in section 16.8 of the land development code. The application has been since enhanced to address public comments and accept conditions to safeguard the public. The proposed conditions and proposed operations mitigate the public's concern and provides a reasonable protection of the public's health, safety, and welfare. The operations by a local company and maintaining the site and residential character sufficiently address questions and concerns raised throughout the public hearing process. Staff and planning commission find the application for special exception was complete and meets the approval criteria, and has been supported by recommendations of approval respectively by each. Based on the substantial competent evidence, we respectfully request your approval of the special exception for bed and breakfast with the conditions approved by the planning commission and as recommended by the staff. I don't stand for any questions.
Do you have any other witnesses to present?
I do not. If I have that letter for the operations, if you want to put it on the screen, I'm sorry, they did.
Yeah. Any questions from city council of the applicant?
I just have one. With regard to the first item on your checklist that's up on the screen right now, late arrivals after 7:00 PM will need a pre-approved special request. What made you select 7:00 PM, and does that apply to the fact that there may have been not a full-time person planning to be on-site?
No, I don't, I can't speak to operations. I can ask the applicant if they want to speak to that.
Because 7:00 PM is, it's kind of iffy if somebody's been traveling all day.
Right.
Just, just a point of reference. You know, I mean typically, if they're coming and they're checking into a hotel, people check in between 5:00 and 10:00 PM, so.
Well, I won't, I don't want to speak for them. I thought it was, I believe it's intent to keep with the normal traffic patterns in the, in the community, but they can speak to that if you want to hear it from the applicant.
If the applicant wants to clarify that, that would be great.
Be sure. Yeah.
Kim Devine for the record, and I have been sworn, that's exactly what we did. This is in a hotel, and there will be a happy hour, so we're trying to get people in early if they need to make special arrangements that will do that, but we're really not encouraging people to be checking in at 10 o'clock at night.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Jason?
If not, then this would be an opportunity for the intervenor's attorney to cross-examine the witnesses that presented on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you very much, again, Michael Witt, Hanloger &amp; Parks for the intervenors. Mr. Green, you made the statement that this is a quote-unquote "local" company, right, that owns and operates this, correct?
Yes, my understanding from the owner.
Okay, and who is that local company?
The owner is, I believe, also the owner of Fisherman's Village.
Excuse me?
Fisherman's Village.
The owner is 751 West Esplanade, Reda Esplanade LLC. You familiar with that?
Yes, I know that.
Are you familiar with the fact that that is a Delaware LLC?
No.
If, if the company is indeed a Delaware company, would you still say that that's a local company?
Yes.
When you say that the quote "local" company is Fisherman's Village, what entity is that? Do you have any idea?
No.
Do you know the entity that owns Fisherman's Village?
No.
Do you know the entity, when, when, we're talking about a condition that there will be an employee that will reside on the property, presumably be available 24 hours on the property. Who's the employer going to be, do you know?
No.
So, is it your understanding then that this is basically going to be owned, operated, controlled by Fisherman's Village? So, Fisherman's Village is going to be the quote homeowner that's supposed to occupy this property under the ordinance?
I don't know.
And let me, let me just address a quick point. Let's just talk about the guest parking. You said there was the guest parking in the rear of the property, correct?
Yes.
And there were how many spots in the back for guest parking?
The site plan showed potential for, I think it was 10. Could you show that?
In the back? And they would come in off what street?
One driveway off Berry and one driveway off Dolly.
All right, give me just one second. If I could ask the lady that testified, is that Ms. Devine?
Devine, yes.
Devine?
Kim Devine for the record, and I have been sworn.
Ms. Devine, you're the agent for the entity that is the applicant, correct?
Yes.
And you used to own this property, correct?
Yes.
And when you owned the property, you tried to sell it, right?
Yes.
You tried to sell it as a single-family resident, right?
Yes.
Residents, correct? How long was it on the market before you sold it to Mr. Laramore's company?
I'm not sure, two years, three years.
And at what price did you have the home listed for sale as a residence?
1.4, I believe. Could have been 1.5.
Let me, let me just ask you this question about the purported local company. You're the agent for the applicant, which is a limited liability company, correct?
Yes.
And the, the limited liability company, at least from what is shown as the owner on the recorded deed in the public records of Charlotte County, Florida, is a Delaware LLC, correct?
Correct.
That Delaware LLC has as its manager an Arizona LLC, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, the quote-unquote "local" company then that will operate this bed and breakfast inn is what entity?
The 751 LLC.
And the 751 LLC is basically controlled by whom or what entity?
The Arizona company is called Arcatara, and the member is John Laramore.
So we've got a Delaware LLC owned and controlled by an Arizona LLC, and then Mr. Laramore is the manager presumably in control of Arcatara, the, kind of the intermediate LLC, correct? And Mr. Laramore is the principal that owns and operates Fisherman's Village, correct?
Yes, Fisherman's Village has a general manager, but yes.
So, is it the, who, let me ask this, who is going to be the employer of this supposed on-site resident person?
751 LLC.
So that LLC is going to become an employer then?
Possibly.
Of a full, possibly. Okay.
I say possibly because I guess we'll have to see if it's going to be a bed and breakfast.
Yes, indeed. Let me, let me ask a couple of questions, some things that are of concern to my clients, the next-door neighbors to this property.
Of me or Jason?
No, I'm gonna, I'll ask you, because I don't think Jason really would know the answer to these. A question about the events. You said that you were going to limit the events, and I think staff had recommended that there would be no events open to the public, is that correct?
Yes, "event" probably wasn't the right word to use.
Okay, what, what word would you use?
A gathering. I mean, there's only so many people there, most of the time they won't know each other. There's not going to be events in inviting people from the outside. It might be the guest going to the pool. You know, if, if there were a wedding, we are part, you know, part of our plan is to partner with local King Fisher, Botanical Gardens, Military Museum, the spa, to offer that kind of thing. So there, so say there was a wedding, I'm giving you an example, a wedding on, at the gazebo or on King Fisher, the wedding party might decide to rent the entire bed and breakfast. So they would be staying there. So maybe they would have a pool party. That's what we meant by "event."
Okay, well, let me, let me ask then, and see if we can narrow that down. Would you, as the applicant, agree to a condition or limitation that there would be no weddings held on-site?
Well, if there was a wedding on-site, it would be a very tiny, tiny wedding, because you're thinking, all of the property, the inside, is going to be individual rooms, so I'm not really sure. If, if you wanted to have a wedding, I'm picturing in my mind, you would have to be down on the bottom floor, and there's just a little area there. I, I can't imagine renting the whole bed and breakfast and having your wedding in the basement. I don't know.
Well, you have outdoor space available for wedding.
Not really. The pool, but there's really not room for a wed, I mean, if, again, you'd be squeezing in there.
Okay, so then it sounds as if that would be a condition that you would agree to because it would be so tiny, it would be negligible. Would that be fair? I guess, let me, let me, let me just, let me ask you this as a question. My, my clients have concerns given the very close proximity of their home and the enjoyable backspace of their home backing up to this anticipated bed and breakfast inn with amplified sound, large group gatherings, and by large group gatherings, I'm not talking about, you know, if you had eight guest rooms and each was double occupied and everybody got together on the pool deck, I'm talking about 30, 40, 50 people mixing, mingling, partying, et cetera, out on the pool deck or surrounding environs on the property. That would be a legitimate concern, correct?
Everyone in the neighborhood does it.
Okay. Every, everyone in the neighborhood has weddings and gatherings of 40 and 50 people?
Sometimes. I've been there 22 years, yes.
Okay, do they have amplified sound?
Some, some of them do. I mean, I would, I don't think we need to have amplified sound, but yeah, I mean, we, we're that kind of neighborhood. People have parties, people have weddings, people have barbecues. I don't anticipate the noise from that bed and breakfast to be, I anticipate it to be less than if a family lived there with small children, three or four teenagers, probably less noise.
Well, and anticipation may not equate to reality sometimes. Would you agree with that statement?
I agree with that.
Okay, you're not going to be the on-site resident employee that's there, right?
I'm not going to be the on-site resident, no.
All right, so, so we, we can't state with any specificity what that future use may look like and how much noise may be emanating from the property, right? To equate it to small children.
As no one in this family could do that, excuse me, with their home.
Okay, that's all, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so at this point, the intervenor may present its witnesses, and of course, the intervenor's witnesses will be subject to cross-examination by the applicant. And by the way, after the intervenor has completed its presentation and the cross-examination by the applicant, the public will have the opportunity to provide their comment to the city council.
Did you have any questions?
Mr. Witt, I may have said it already, but I'll just reiterate, you have 30 minutes.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. I'd like to make a presentation and then call our witnesses. I think the testimony will be fairly brief. So as, before I start, we had sent to the city an intervenor request. I would just like to make sure that that makes it into the record of proceedings.
It will.
Okay, and I would also ask Madam Clerk that the PowerPoint that we've just distributed will have an extra copy, would like that into the, into the record as well, as far as the argument.
It will.
Thank you so much.
Please, please speak up.
Okay, sorry.
Can we turn the microphone up a little bit? I'm having a hard time hearing, again.
I can, I can speak.
The actual podium can raise up a little bit higher if that would be, if that would help.
Look at that. That's plenty, thank you. Maybe that, maybe that will help.
It does help.
Yeah, it would also help if you would try to speak up, that would be great.
Yeah, I will, I will.
Thank you.
I hear myself, I think, because of the items around me, it sounds like I'm speaking a lot louder than possibly I am. Thank you. Okay, just a brief outline of what we'll, what we'll cover. It's, it's the position of the intervenors that the requested use is a commercial use as an inn and not as a bed and breakfast. And I'd like to walk through several of the code provisions and help the council understand why we take that position. I covered briefly some of the definitions with one of the prior witnesses, but let me just roll, roll through those. A commercial use is a business establishment that would be marketing services, which would include, for example, hotels, motels, and inns as defined under the codes and ordinances. And a hotel, motel, and inn, as we covered, that's a pretty broad definition as a building containing sleeping rooms for rental or occupancy to temporary guests. If you just take that snapshot, this proposed use meets that definition. It is a building containing sleeping rooms for rental or occupancy to temporary guests. You know, we've, we've heard Fisherman's Village is really the entity that's behind this. I don't think that there's any, anyone on the council that doesn't understand that to be part of kind of the background of this. This is a, a proposed use by the owner of Fisherman's Village, which is a commercial enterprise located in fairly close proximity to, to this property. Now, a bed and breakfast, what, what separates a bed and breakfast inn, which is a type of inn, from hotel, motel, or inn? The main requirement is the last sentence there that we've highlighted, that the homeowner shall reside on-site. Now, I have a differing interpretation than counsel for the city who has opined that, well, it's an LLC that owns the property, and an LLC can't occupy it, it's a legal fiction, so therefore they would have to have an employee, they could designate an employee to reside on-site. I think the way this is written, there's some legal doctrines that come into play. And a homeowner and an employee are not the same. They cannot be. A homeowner is the owner. And if you say, well, they could have an employee, I disagree. The owner would be the person, because every entity, when you strip away the layers of the onion, every entity has a person that's in charge, okay? You have an owner of a company. Sometimes it's multiple people, but you're going to have someone who has an ownership interest in that company. That is different than an employee of the company, someone that you hire, you pay an hourly wage or salary to, okay? And in fact, your own definition distinguishes between those two because it specifically says the homeowner shall reside on-site, and you cannot have any more than two full-time employees. So in your own definition, you distinguish between the homeowner and the employees. And the two full-time employees does not include the owner. So you got two separate categories. And I think that, that leads to a different interpretation, that leads really, I think, to a different outcome in the city council when you look at this and vote. Let me stop and say this, we're not opposed to bed and breakfast inns in the city of Puntagorda. We're not opposed to Airbnb operations in the city of Puntagorda. I represent people that live right smack dab next door, particularly to the driveway where all of the guest parking is going to be located. And I didn't see which one, there was one of you that said you were in the hotel business for 30-something years. You know, you know, and you questioned about the 7:00, you know, late check-in. You know it's going to happen. There are going to be people pulling in, they come in late, you know, it's 9:00, 10:00 at night, they get out, it's the noise, it's the clanking, it's the car doors, it's the talking, it's the unloading of all the suitcases, and everything right out there, you know, on the side driveway. I highly doubt that they're going to be made to load and unload in the dark at a bed and breakfast inn, so there's going to be lighting, whether it's on or whether it clicks on when they come out to load and unload. Now, my clients are going to be trying to sleep in their expensive, nice, beautiful, peaceful, tranquil home, right next to that driveway where now you have people coming and going all hours of the night. The condition doesn't limit anything. Well, you'd have to have special arrangements made if you're going to come in after 7:00. That means nothing. That means, oh, okay, hey, we'll see whenever you get here, 11:00, 12:00 in the morning, doesn't matter, that's fine, okay? You know, just come on in, check in, clunk your luggage, you know, happy to see you when you arrive. So, the homeowner, as I mentioned here, has to reside on-site, and he can't have Section four point eight of the city code has eight mandatory criteria to be a bed and breakfast inn. Eight. We've listed them here. It's a single-family home, yes, check, they do meet that one. Located in a historic district, no, it's not located in a historic district. So strike one. Minimum condition floor area of fifteen hundred square feet, it's a big house, I've not measured it, they've said it's, you know, significantly more than that, we have no argument. Thumbs up, check, minimum fifteen hundred square feet. It's designated as a contributing structure to the historic district, no. Strike two, it's not. Rooms subdivided less than two hundred square feet, there have been no inspections, we have no idea. I've just put a question mark there, we don't know the size of the rooms that they anticipate having. The bed and breakfast inn is owner occupied. I say strike because as we see in your definition, homeowner is different than employees, those two don't meet. And having an employee onsite is not the same as having a homeowner. So you mentioned, um, Mr. Manager, the- when you lived next door to the bed and breakfast, I think it was Mr. Fox that lived there, okay? So, Mr. Fox, I presume, was the owner of that property and not an employee of that property. All guest parking shall be in the rear of the home. We've got, I think, some inconsistent statements there. In the application, in some of the findings from Wyler Engineering, they talk about parking for six, yes?
You're- not quite what I said.
Okay, uh, uh, that's- that's all right, that's argument anyway.
Okay.
I haven't- I haven't requested to cross-examine you. So all guest parking in the rear of the home, I don't think so. If they have eight, uh, Mr. Green talked about there's parking for six in that area along the back of the home, um, you know, yet you can have up to ten in other areas, and- and what do you call the back of the home versus the side of the home? We know where the front of the home is, and again, a big circular driveway, you know, along an area, the back of the home is what backs up to my client's property. Um, and I think if you look at the schematics and you look at the application, you look at what Wyler has said and what he said in the record, it was there's parking for six in the back. So already, we have a problem there with the proposed eight, um, rooms. And then one space per room of lodging, they're not going to meet that with eight rooms. Now, a bed and- here, the mandatory criteria under section four point eight cannot be waived by a special exception. This really gets to the- to the nub of our presentation for the council today. What can you all do? Can you consider this as a special exception and approve it as a special exception? I don't want to get too far down in the weeds and it may be a little bit complicated, but it is your own codes and ordinances, and I think you have to kind of follow along and- and- and see, gee, I'm not sure that we can do what the- the applicant is asking us to do. A bed and breakfast inn is a specific use permitted with conditions under three point seven C one that staff talked about, okay? Now, it's not permitted as a matter of right. We agree with that, staff agrees with that, I think the applicant agrees with that. It is a use permitted with conditions. Now, that's a defined term, and it says with criteria which must be met in order for the use to be allowed within the district. And that's section nineteen point three, um, sub-paragraph one fourteen in your definitions, okay? So in- in your ordinances, in your definitions, it defines what a use permitted with conditions is, and those criteria must be met. What we've seen already, they're not going to meet them. They're not going to meet those conditions, they can't meet those conditions. They're coming in under a catch-all provision of section three point seven F nine, that by special exception, you can approve such other uses as deemed appropriate. This is not such other uses, it's already a use that's defined in your code, okay? So you've got uses permitted by right, uses permitted by special condition, okay, upon- with- with conditions, and then you have special exceptions. We're here under a special exception application, but this is a use permitted with conditions, it's a defined category, that's the box that you're in. And it says very clearly, they have to meet all the criteria, all of those conditions. You can oppose more if they're going to have impacts on neighboring properties, okay? So, the special exception under sixteen point eight can be granted for certain uses that due to their nature may have potential for adverse impacts on adjacent uses, such as the Ivies, okay? Now, what do they have to do? Let's look, sixteen point eight K two, this is what it says, the approval criteria for those requests, that the use shall comply with applicable district regulations, that's key. The use as a bed and breakfast inn shall comply with applicable district regulations, and then this is- this is the most important. I don't make this up, this is in your law, this is in your ordinances, the council has no authority to waive or disregard the approval criteria. Now, what are the applicable district regulations that they're required to comply with and that you have no authority to waive or disregard? Three point seven C that provides for a bed and breakfast inn on the- as a use permitted with conditions, okay? So those conditions are set out in four point eight, those are mandatory, this is- this is the quote in three point seven, mandatory criteria which must be met in order to comply with the district regulations. So you can't waive them. You can't disregard them for purposes of this application. They only meet two of the eight that I went through, and I'll highlight that again just in- in one second. The burden is on the applicant, the burden is not on us to disprove anything. You all sit in a quasi-judicial role today, and you have to take the evidence, the facts, and you have to basically apply it to the law, which is your codes and ordinances. And you can't ignore, just like a judge sitting on the bench at the Charlotte County Courthouse can't ignore the law, you can't ignore or disregard the existing law and the existing regulations. So, we've gone through, there they are. These are the eight mandatory criteria that they're required to meet, they shall meet. You can't ignore it, you can't waive it, you can't disregard it. So they're not seeking a special exception, what they're asking the council for is an improper exemption and a waiver from meeting these criteria for your definition. It- it is a defined thing in your codes, okay? I'll just highlight, you know, the- it's not a contributing structure. So, I've- I've- I've seen in some of the documents that, oh, somewhere nineteen ninety-nine or something, somebody said something about, oh gee, you know, we may want this to be a bed and breakfast someday. That purported subjective intent has absolutely no bearing, that's not evidence that you can look at or rely on. It has to be owner occupied, um, again, I- I- I hit this, and I just got the testimony in, it's there, I don't know that you all really noticed it or saw it, okay? That this employer that's supposed to be the owner occupied is a Delaware company that's owned and managed by an Arizona company. So my argument is that the manager then of Arcoterra, when you- when you peel away the onion, you get down, who's the owner? If this has to be owner occupied, it's John Larmore. So if the condition is that the owner of the LLC, Mr. John Larmore, is required to live in this home, then that may then meet that- that prong of the definition. I disagree with staff's opinion and the applicant's position with respect to the parking. Guest parking is- is to be located solely in the rear of the- the property, that's clear in the- in the ordinance. On-street parking is permitted, you can say, if you need a total minimum number given square footage, whatever, for some other calculations, you can look at some of the other parking that's available, but not for guest parking. Guest parking, eight rooms, eight cars, minimum. I would say with the- with the other person, the- the onsite, maybe Mr. Larmore, he would need a car, he could park maybe on the side of the building. I'm going to put on testimony here in just a minute, um, I've got about fifteen minutes left, the intervenor is uniquely affected. Um, and- and here's- here's what I want you all to think about, and why we're asking for you all to deny this. We're not talking about conditions, we're asking you to deny the application because I don't believe that it properly meets a special exception application for you all to even consider in the first place. But bear in mind, if you live next door, it's operating twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. There's- there's very little control who comes, when they come in and out, hey, I've got an early flight, I'm in, I'm out, whatever. Noise that's incompatible with the true residential use, deliveries, they're not cooking onsite, they've said that in the application, they're trucking food in from Fisherman's Village. This is a Fisherman's Village hotel, that's what this is. Let's be clear, it was anticipated as a hotel and event center, it started out, it's in the application, they're going to hold events onsite. Well, now it's like, well, we're not going to hold events, and really, what is an event? It started out as a hotel and event center under the guise of a bed and breakfast. And we've got photographs, you'll see the applicant's property in this photo to the left of your screen, facing Reda Esplanade, my client's property is directly behind it on Berry Street, backing up to Dolly Street. And if you- if you look at that photo, um, the area to the west, like the, kind of on the left of my client's property, adjacent to that driveway, that's the master bedroom. That's the master bedroom suite that is located right there at the guest parking area of that home. That's a problem. And I've circled it here, so you get- you get a visual. So there's the driveway that the guests are going to be coming in and out, there are the garages where you see the truck, that's the driveway, and you can see the proximity. The landscaping that they talk about, there's no noise barrier there, there's no landscaping sufficient to cut down on any noise, so, or lights, um, you know, that are on disturbing my clients. They talk about, you know, this being uniquely situated to walk to city center. You know, we've put on here, you can see where the- where the property is as opposed to- to downtown. It's, if you look at the photo, it's toward the very bottom, it's- it's got the little red pin, seven fifty-one West Reda Esplanade. Maybe you'll walk, um, I don't know, it's quite a poke, I don't- I- I doubt you're going to be doing that in July. But it's much more uniquely situated to serve Fisherman's Village. All right, I would like to put on Janice Ivy to- to testify as far as some of the- some of the impacts, and Ms. Ivy will come forward.
Janice Ivy, and I have been informed.
You have twelve minutes.
Thank you. Mrs. Ivy, just for the record, please state your full name.
Uh, Janice Ivy, um, at one twenty-two Berry Street.
And- and you own that property along with your husband Craig, is that correct?
That is correct.
When did you buy that home?
Approximately a year ago, May twenty-fifth of twenty eighteen.
Um, when you bought it, was the neighboring property at seven fifty-one West Reda Esplanade occupied?
Yes.
And who was there?
Uh, Ms. Devine.
Did you have a chance to talk to Ms. Devine?
Um, on occasion.
Did you- did you talk to Ms. Devine before you bought your house on Berry Street?
No.
Did you talk to her agent?
No.
Did you look at the house, you and your husband, with some thought about possibly buying the home?
Yeah.
Okay, explain to the council what happened there.
Um, well, it's a long story, but, um, we reviewed the house online and at the request of one of the other neighbors, they said it was for sale. I'd actually seen the pictures online, and it's not the same taste that I would have, and I'm not looking to sign up to paint or to move, actually, we weren't looking to move, but it was just a huge project to undertake, and we were not looking to do that.
Okay. So you ended up buying the house next door, correct?
Yes, I had previously seen that home on the market, and I actually had saved it because I thought it was beautiful inside, and I was just curious to see what it would sell for.
You've been there about a year, you and your husband, correct? And- and have you had the chance to actually reside in the home?
Yes.
Um, tell us about the neighborhood.
It's quaint, it's very quiet, um, it's, I don't know, we haven't had a lot of parties, uh, there have been occasion where there's been events at the Bayfront Center and at the Boaters Alliance Center, and of course, the traffic of pedestrians out in the park, but it's never been loud. After Ms. Devine moved out, I'm not sure exactly when that was, but I noticed in January that there were occupants in the home, um, weren't really sure who they were, and we were under the impression that she had sold the property. I never really saw the same people twice, uh, there were men in and out of there, um, and on occasion, there would be late-night music out in the pool, during the day, that's fine, you know, we'd do the same thing, but in the evening, it did wake me up, so I, you know, just set a timer on the TV to try to drown out the noise, um, without, you know, I didn't want to call the police at that point, being that they'd only been there a short period of time.
Okay. So your experience, other than those circumstances emanating from the seven fifty-one property, that the- the neighborhood is quiet, serene, peaceful?
Very, it's very quaint.
Is that one of the things that attracted you and your husband to this neighborhood?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Do you have concerns, being the next-door neighbor, to this being approved and operating as a bed and breakfast inn?
Um, absolutely, and I think that, um, the noise, obviously, you can call somebody, maybe if there's somebody living there, call them and ask them to- to address the noise if it's after hours. We're not looking for people to be sitting in the rocking chairs and not speaking to one another, we just want respect, and we're not even getting that now. And I don't, we don't look to go and raise a lot of fuss, just simply we want to be able to get along with people. However, um, the traffic, just with the pickup that you saw in the one picture, when that pickup starts up in the morning, I hear it, he leaves at about six-thirty in the morning, seven o'clock, and I hear it, as soon as he starts that vehicle up, I can hear it, whether I'm awake or not, I hear it. I can hear whether people are in the pool, sound and water, it's- it's just going to reverberate off of the building because it's a closed-in area. So, um, the noise, the parking, I mean, people talk about how many guests are staying there, well, we came down here to visit friends, that's how we ultimately moved here. So I can't imagine coming here and maybe, maybe not knowing anybody and not, oh, you can't- you can't come visit us here because you can't park, there's nowhere to park. I just, that's a little bit of a- a reach for me, I can't imagine, oh, oh, well, there's plenty of parking. There's going to be parking on Dolly, and I know that is a concern of ours and our neighbors, not that we don't want people parking in front of our house, but if we have landscaping debris or our trash is out there, or we're expecting our mail to be delivered or a package to be delivered, we don't want that to be a hindrance on our street, nor do we want our neighbors to- to have both sides being parked on, which we have on occasion, where it's a problem just getting traffic in and out the street, which people leaving the Boaters Alliance Building invariably just go up Berry and turn on to Marion.
Other than the noise, do you have concerns regarding, like, lighting issues? And, and, you know, let's call it light pollution?
It is, it is, and, um, you know, I think my husband and I are very adaptive, we lived in Manhattan, so we did have room darkening shades, and we did pull them every night. But we do have windows that do not have shades, so I guess we could shut our hurricane shutters every night just to make sure that we drowned out any light that may be emanating from that, the back of the building. But I, you know, the- the headlight concern, oh, absolutely, people going in and out of the property is definitely a concern.
Do you have a concern with respect to the value of your property being impacted?
Absolutely. I- I can't imagine, I mean, I've stayed in bed and breakfasts before, and it's usually in a quaint area, I don't know that I've stayed in one in a close proximity to another residence, normally it's been like a farm or somewhere out in a remote area, however, our property value, um, I'm sure will take a hit. Have I had it appraised? No, I have not. However, we owned a house over in PGI that we had on the market when we bought this house, and we had at least two to three people look at that house every week, and we finally sold it in November. But the common theme was, they didn't like the condos across the canal. These were condos that are mostly snowbirds, so the hurricane shutters are shut. Now, in February, sometimes I did feel like I was in a store- Now, in February, sometimes I did feel like I was in the storefront window, just because there's people out, you know, in those condos, and there's a lot of them. So the fact that they had a problem just with condos across the canal, I can't imagine, well, there's, that's a hotel right there, or inn, or there's a lot of people coming and going. And I think that, to me, and even people with children, I can't imagine, you know, oh, well, I'll go ahead and take a bite on this pricey house, even though there is a hotel next door, and not worry about my children being out there. So the overall value, if it's a retired couple, maybe they would be willing to spend it, it's a beautiful home, so, I don't know, but I'm sure that there will be some degradation to our value.
Just a couple of questions, and I'll wrap up. There's a photo up there, and I just want to make sure that the record is clear, that shows your home on the right, correct?
That is correct.
And the blue circle that I put on the photo, like a second grader, that indicates your master bedroom window, correct, overlooking the parking area?
That is correct.
I guess a last question. Would you buy your home today, if you and your husband came down, would you buy your home today if it was a bed and breakfast next door?
No, in fact, when we bought the home, obviously, Ms. Devine was there by herself, we agreed to vacate an easement between our property and her property and another home behind us, under the, you know, that it was a residential, single-family home, and that she was the owner. In the process, from the time we actually signed the vacation of the easement application, in the process of that, we signed it, I believe, on the eighteenth, or it was mid-October, the property was sold, and then it was approved by the city to vacate the alley. If I could retract that, I would immediately, immediately.
Did Ms. Devine, as part of that request, did anybody ever tell you that they were anticipating using this as a bed and breakfast?
No.
All right, that's all the questions I have.
We'll defer the cross-examination until after you've had your second witness, so that we don't eat into your time.
I'm going to just pass on the second witness, we're good, okay?
Okay, so the applicant may cross-examine that last witness if they wish? We'll take that podium and... Go ahead.
For the witness, but however, the presenter, the attorney?
He was only presenting argument, not facts, testimony, and I'm going to advise, I mean, that's what his, that's what he started his statement off with, was that he was providing argument, not testimony. If he, if he'd like to adopt that as testimony, then, of course, you'd have an opportunity to cross-examine.
I would like to get that clear on the record, because it sounded like factual information.
Mr. Witt?
He's trying to present.
What factual statements did I make?
Well, I'm just asking, are you standing by your position that that was simply argument, that not facts?
Yes, yes, mine was opening statement and argument under the code provision.
So I'll advise the council that your statement, your presentation was not of a factual nature, but an argument, and not to base their decision on your argument.
Well...
With the exception of the argument that was presented, not the facts.
Yes, yes, yeah, they apply facts to the ordinances, I was making argument about the ordinances, how it's written and how they have to look at the special exception application, not testifying as to any facts.
Right.
Okay, well, I'll be kind, but for the record, I do have an issue with some of the statements that he made related to factual.
You can present a counter-argument, and you'll have the opportunity to do so, fifteen minutes of rebuttal, but right now, your time is to cross-examine the witness that was presented on behalf of the intervenor.
Thank you. Ma'am, hi, how are you? Do you know, do you have any restrictions on your property as far as limitations or prohibitions on weddings that you can have on your property?
No.
Do you know if you have any prohibitions or limitations as far as amplified music?
No.
Do you have any limitations or prohibitions as far as on-street parking in your property?
No.
The picture showed a car in front of your house, is that your car or a visitor's car? On Berry Street, there's a car in front of the house, and I don't want to touch your presentation.
I'm happy to find it.
Sure, thank you. There you go. The aerial, there's a car on Berry Street in front of it, is that your car or a visitor's car to your home?
It could be one of our vehicles, but I don't know, I can't tell, I'd have to see the actual car.
Okay, thank you. As a residential use, is there a limitation of how many people you can have at your house or in your house?
No.
Have you ever had more than ten or twelve people at your house?
Yes.
Have you ever had people out by your pool with cocktails or party or pool parties? No, you've never had anybody at your pool?
No, everybody's been inside, actually.
Excellent. Have, and I think you say it, but I just want to make sure you're clear, you have not had any, have you had any professional analysis of value or harm to value or real estate value related to your property?
It hasn't been turned into a bed and breakfast, so no.
For the impact to your property, I think you made the statement...
No, we have not.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
All right, so at this point, let's hear from, go ahead.
Is it possible to take a break?
Absolutely, that's your problem?
Yes, at some point here, we need a major break, so I think...
Just so you know, we'll then hear from the public, and then have the, both the intervenor and the applicant have fifteen minutes after that.
Okay, so I have ten fifty-five, and do we need five or ten? Okay, we're going to make this, try to make this quick, so we will reconvene at eleven o'clock, so set your watches accordingly.